Get started here. Sorry, we're a little bit late here and we've got a few things tonight on the agenda. So we'll go ahead and stand and say the prayer and then the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you this evening just thanking you for another marvelous day. Lord, we ask that you continue to lead, guide, and direct this council in all matters concerning Talbot County community and citizens. Lord, we ask that you bless each and everyone that's here, and we ask this prayer in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's get started. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. First off, the agenda, the agenda has been before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, we do have one amendment to accept the absentee ballot from councilman Stett.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda is the minutes of March 25th. We've had a chance to take a look at them. Has council got any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Next is the dispersments of April 22nd is before us. We've had a chance to take a look at those. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to that? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, tonight's first proclamation is sexual harassment awareness month. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read the proclamation, please?
Proclamation Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2025. Whereas April 2025 marks Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time to bring attention to the widespread issue of sexual violence and to empower communities to take action. And whereas sexual abuse, assault, and harassment affect individuals of every background, to address this, we must promote education around consent, healthy communication, and bystander intervention. By equipping individuals and communities with these tools, we can help prevent violence before it starts and foster a culture of respect and care. And whereas, everyone in our communities deserves a life, deserves to live in safe and supportive environments where they are treated with respect. When our workplaces, schools, and communities work together to uphold safety and respect, we make progress in preventing sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. And whereas, statistics show that nationwide, eighty-one percent of women and forty-three percent of men reported experiencing some form of sexual harassment and/or assault in their lifetime. And whereas, one in three female victims and one in four male victims of completed or attempted rape first experienced it between the ages of eleven and seventeen. And whereas, For All Seasons Rape Crisis Center continues to experience dramatic growth in need by the community with sexual assault services increasing by fifty percent in the last year alone. And whereas, for All Seasons, April twenty, two thousand twenty-five Sexual Assault Awareness Month theme, SIP Safe, calls attention to the alarming reality of alcohol and drug-assisted sexual assault and urges mid-shore residents to stay informed, vigilant, and equipped to safeguard themselves and their communities. And whereas, Talbot County supports the experts who work to identify and prevent sexual violence and are dedicated to providing services and avenues for survivors seeking proper care and treatment. And whereas, Sexual Assault Awareness Month and each day of the year is an opportunity to stay with survivors, to recognize progress in combating these crimes, and to recommit to reducing sexual violence in Talbot County. Now therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby recognize April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Talbot County and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this twenty-second day of April in the year of our Lord, 2025.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Good job. Is there anybody from For All Seasons want to come on up? How are you guys? Good, good.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
Yes.
I'm Katie Tiki and I'm Vice President of Marketing and Communications.
My name is Maisha Johnson and I'm a victim advocate at the For All Seasons Rape Crisis Center.
Great, well, welcome.
And I know you all know us very well, but for anyone watching who doesn't know us, we provide therapy, psychiatry, rape crisis services, and education to the community. And we are the only rape crisis center serving over two hundred thousand residents of the mid-shore, so men, women, and children. And so rape crisis, our rape crisis center is a huge part of our agency. We serve clients from toddler age all the way up through their nineties. Unfortunately, sexual assault, rape, and abuse is a very present issue even in beautiful Talbot County. And I really thought it was important for Maisha to be here because she's the one that actually is answering the calls in the middle of the night and is going to the hospital to sit by the bedside of victims and to help them understand their rights. So I wanted her to share just a little bit about what she does, like what a typical work week might look like.
So every work week is different. I always tell people that I don't work a nine-to-five, I'm on call twenty-four-seven. Healing doesn't have a timeframe, so I get phone calls in the middle of the night. I do ER visits for clients who have been sexually assaulted. I accompany them to court, protective orders. We go walks in the park, we paint fingernails, like all things to them. So I'm their support, sometimes I'm the only support that they have. That's what a typical day looks like.
Could you give the audience a little bit more information on how to get ahold of you?
So we do have a twenty-four-seven hotline that can be utilized. They can give us a call at any time of the day, doesn't matter what hour. And I can provide the phone number for the crisis hotline, and then they can also give a call to our rape crisis center.
Okay, you can say it out loud if you want to.
So the main number for For All Seasons is four one zero eight two two one zero one eight. And then for the hotline, it is four one zero eight two zero five six zero zero. We do also have a Spanish hotline for those who are Latino clients, it's four one zero eight two nine six one four three.
That's great, thank you, appreciate that.
People can also visit our website at forallseasonsink.org, so we have all the information there that they might need. We did just want to tell you all about our campaign this month, which is helping to prevent drug facilitated sexual assault. So we've actually seen some cases this year where people have been drugged at local bars and have been sexually assaulted. So we actually, we created this SIP Safe product which goes over a drink, and you can put your straw in it. And we're delivering these to the college campuses, so Chesapeake College and also Washington College. And so this is just meant to kind of build awareness, help start conversation, help, you know, prevent drugs from going into someone's drink. It also doubles as a scrunchie, so it goes around your wrist. And we have a website with information, so if you go to sipsafe.com, and that's also on our website, you can find all the information about protecting yourself.
That's great, that's great, good job. Okay, anything, council?
Katie, just want to verify, sipsafe.com for that website?
Yeah, well, it's sipsafe.org, but you can also go to the For All Seasons site and it's on the main.
On your website, okay. Well, thank you so much for coming in, you know, it's always a pleasure to have you come in so that we can educate the public and we certainly appreciate all the hard work that you go into serving the people of not only Talbot County, but the entire mid-shore region. So your role is vital and critical to a lot of people, so we appreciate that and hats go off to you.
Thank you for all you do and thank, we're pleased to indicate to the public all the services that you offer and how well you offer it.
Thank you.
I always appreciate what you're doing to raise the awareness of this issue and thereby reduce the stigma. It is something that really, that's a barrier that has come down. It's still there, but it has been reduced somewhat and we've seen, I've seen friends, colleagues who've said, yes, I too was a victim. And I think that makes it easier than to reach out to receive the treatment options that you provide. Thank you for, both for that treatment option, but also for what you're doing to raise the awareness and to reduce the stigma.
Like my colleague said, I really appreciate it and you guys are making a huge difference for Talbot County, that's for sure. We really, really appreciate it.
I wanted to mention one more thing, I almost forgot. Tomorrow at the Ivy at lunchtime between eleven and two, we're doing a community art project. So people can decorate denim patches with messages of support to survivors, and then that will hang in our Rape Crisis Center wing. So when people come to our Rape Crisis Center, they'll see that the community stands behind them. So that's at the Ivy tomorrow, just stop by, it's a free fun activity for the community.
If you guys would like, come on up, we have something for you, proclamation.
Oh, I move for the proclamation.
Oh, yeah, second.
Yep, exactly.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is introduction of an administrative resolution. Madam Secretary.
An administrative resolution entitled "A Resolution of Talbot County, Maryland, The County Authorizing the Issuance and Sale of General Obligation Bonds in a Principal Amount Not Exceeding Twenty-Six Million Nine Hundred Thousand Dollars Pursuant to the Authority of Bill Number Fifteen Eighty-Three Enacted by the County Council of Talbot County on February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, the public local law. Section ten two oh three of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, two thousand thirteen, Replacement Volume, as amended, the Enabling Act, and Section six two three of the Charter of Talbot County, Maryland, the Charter, the bonds to be designated Talbot County Public Improvement Bonds Series Two Thousand Twenty-Five, the net proceeds of the sale thereof to be used and applied for the public purpose of financing or refinancing the planning, design, acquisition, renovation, construction, and/or furnishing of improvements to and expansion of the Chapel District Elementary School, prescribing the form and tenor of the bonds and the terms and conditions of the issuance and sale thereof at private or public sale, including the form of the notice of sale, prescribing the terms and conditions of the bonds and all other details incident to the issuance, sale, and delivery of the bonds, providing for the dispersment of the proceeds of the bonds, authorizing the preparation and distribution of a preliminary and final official statement in connection with the sale of the bonds, providing for the levy and collection of any taxes necessary for the prompt payment of the maturing principal of and interest on the bonds, and providing that the full faith and credit and taxing power of Talbot County, Maryland shall be pledged to the payment of such principal and interest, subject to the limitation of the tax levy set out in Section six fourteen of the Charter of Talbot County and generally relating to the issuance, sale, delivery, and payment of bonds."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Welcome, Martha.
Good evening, council. Martha Sparks, Finance Director, Talbot County. This resolution, administrative resolution brings us closer to going out to the bond market for this chapel elementary renovation and addition project that was approved in capital improvement budget last year in FY twenty-five. And that project is moving along, and this is going to take us one step closer to the process of actually going out to the bond market.
Okay, any questions, council?
And with our solid bond rating, these are, this is, this will be a solid and safe investment, perhaps safer than United States Treasury bonds.
That is probably correct.
Okay, Madam Secretary, do we need a motion on this, or do we just call the roll?
Introduce.
Introduce.
Introduced by show of hands?
Yep.
Introduced by council? And then you can ask her to call the roll.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Mr. Stett?
Okay. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, Madam Secretary, is Resolution Three Seventy-Seven.
Resolution Number Three Seventy-Seven, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping certain property located at three nine six five Ocean Gateway, Trap, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map Fifty-Five, Parcel Fifty-One, from unprogrammed to S-one, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by the Town of Trap.
Okay.
Thank you, county council, Ray Clark County Engineer. Again, this is a resolution that we had processed, it was associated with a map error that we had. The Paris Food Property, ultimately, it was unclassified, and this is basically to correct that, to make it a, it's basically, the Paris Food Property was actually provided sewer service, I think, back in two thousand and twenty-one or two. So this is really to rectify that issue. It's ultimately relabeling the property as S-one W-one, so that now has sewer service available to that.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to introduce a resolution to this, I'm sorry, an amendment to this resolution, which was requested by the Public Works Advisory Board. It adds a recital acknowledging that the property in fact is already connected, that this was done in error. And so I'll introduce that amendment.
Okay.
You need a second, yeah, second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to vote on it.
No, we got to vote on the amendment. So you're saying that this has already been through the Planning Commission?
So the, 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 Mr. Thomas, you want to address that?
Yes, so at the last meeting, we had the public hearing on Three Seventy-Seven, both the Public Works Advisory Board and the Planning Commission had recommended approval. The Planning Commission had found it consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, but Vice President Lesher had requested an amendment at that time to add a recital that the Public Works Advisory Board had requested. Just clarifying that this is an after-the-fact change that they had in fact connected to the property by mistake in, I think, two thousand twenty-one. So that's what the amendment does, is just add that extra recital.
Sure, okay. So action-wise, we can go ahead and vote on this, or does it have to?
You can, no, it's not a substantive amendment, it's just adding a clarifying recital. It doesn't change the substance of the resolution at all, so you can go ahead, it's been introduced, you can show hands for sponsorship and then vote on the amendment, and then if it passes, you can proceed to vote on the resolution as amended.
Okay, all right, okay, we got to show hands.
For introducing the amendment. Introduced by council. And are you going to call for a vote on the amendment?
Yep, Madam Secretary, call the vote, please.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Just wanted to ask one question before voting. Did our Planning and Zoning Director have any comments as to the amendment anyway? Before I vote, just wanted to know, he had anything to share?
Sorry, for the record, Brett Tarleton, Director of Planning and Zoning. No additional comments, I was just standing up to clarify that the Planning Commission did consider this resolution at their April second meeting, and they were aware of the additional amendment offered by the Public Works Advisory Board. That was not offered as a condition of their certification of the consistency of this resolution with the comprehensive plan and the seven relevant standards of the environmental articles, so they did not forward that along to you as a recommendation, however, they were not opposed to it either.
Okay, all right, sounds good, aye.
Okay. All right.
Aye.
Mr. Stett. So now it's amended, so now Three Seventy-Seven is eligible for vote as amended.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Well, I think that you can call the roll, but I, I'm, I'm actually, I think that there remains an outstanding question on this when we had the town attorney in here from Trap on, I think it was February twenty-fifth. She declined to certify that the industrial discharge from this property was unrelated to the violations at the Trap plant. We asked that question a couple of different ways, and we were offered a possible follow-up on that, which I don't think we've received. I, I'm just not ready to support this at this time. If perhaps we have more information, I might be willing to support it at a future date. We could move forward if there's a majority, or I would, I would, I would move to place this this resolution on the table until we can get a response on that.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and, you want to push this to the next meeting?
Well, just place this on the table pending a response from Trap.
Okay, all right. We got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Nay.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Let me clarify before I vote. So it's been amended, but you're asking for a response from Trap before? I thought we already had something from Trap in regards to this. In regards to.
I mean, I think, I thought we were just fixing the problem.
Yeah, so I guess I'm, I will, yeah, nay for me.
The, the motion fails. So you can go ahead and call the.
Okay. Madam Secretary, call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Nay.
Ms. Milkie?
Nay.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Mr. Stett?
Aye.
All right. Next on the agenda, Madam Secretary, is Bill Fifteen Eighty-four.
Bill Number Fifteen Eighty-four.
You got it.
A bill to repeal official zoning map thirty-two of Talbot County and reenact the same with amendments to the zoning classifications of Tax Map Thirty-two, Parcel Thirty-six, consisting of three point seven three seven acres more or less from town residential, TR, to general commercial, GC, and of a portion of Tax Map Thirty-two, Parcel Ninety-One, consisting of four point six six zero three acres more or less from TR to GC.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, you want to help us with that one?
Yes, so at the last meeting, council had a public hearing regarding this proposed text amendment. So it's now eligible for vote, but as part of the approval process, as part of the considerations of the bill, the council has to approve certain, or make certain findings of fact before it votes on the bill, including whether there was a mistake in the existing zoning classification or a change in the character of the neighborhood. And the argument that was presented to you by the applicant and that was supported by the Planning Commission was that their, that properties zoning, current zoning classifications were in error, and therefore, a rezoning on the basis of mistake would be appropriate. So you have before you findings of fact, to that effect, that if you can adopt if you so choose, and if you adopt those, then you can proceed to vote on the bill. And now if you can answer any questions or address any concerns you might have.
Okay.
I think I asked this at the public hearing, but a question for Mr. Tarleton. The parcel that would have the zoning designation changed either already has or will be subject to the gateway overlay zone?
That's correct, that overlay zone is applied over top of those properties, I believe, within the first, is it?
Hundreds or two hundred feet.
The first one hundred feet of the property, so outside of that one hundred-foot property, the overlay ceases to exist for the remaining depth of that property boundary. But the gateway overlay already does extend to that extent of the property. The only zoning that would be changed here effectively would be the zoning change from the TR respectively on both properties to the general commercial zoning. So no overlay zone changes are proposed here.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, so we'll make, the motion is to approve the finding of the facts?
Yes, that's the first step. I'll move for the findings of fact.
Yep, second, okay, okay. We got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Mr. Stett?
Aye.
Okay. So now, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
That bill is eligible for vote.
Yep, can you call the, call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Mr. Stett?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, next on the agenda is Bill Fifteen Eighty-four.
That's what we just voted on.
Was it? Oh, I'm sorry.
So on to item eight.
Yep, okay. Madam Secretary, could you read the heading and, Joe, you guys want to come on up?
Presentation of Opioid Restitution Fund, ORF Micro Grant Applications and Requests for Council Action.
Okay. All right, welcome.
Good evening, council. Mr. President, thank you for having us. I'm Sheriff Joe Gamble.
Ann Semper.
Ann's the co-chair of Eldac, I'm the current chair of Eldac, and we're here to discuss the opioid restitution fund, our micro grant program that we were, we were charged with by council to come back to you with recommendations. On April eighth, we, the Eldac Subcommittee reviewed five applications, discussed them, and voted on five micro grant applications that came in to the Subcommittee. During that time, anybody, you can only imagine when you have a Eldac meeting, that there are people that are in the meeting that are also have submitted grants because that's what Eldac does, is tries to figure out what the gaps are in the community for treatment, services, education, that thing. So anybody that was involved in any of the, any of the grants stepped out of the room and recused themselves from a vote. And I'll let Ann talk about basically what, some of the areas that we covered.
There were five applicants and the areas, the objective areas were education, crisis response, safe station, crisis stabilization centers, and overdose prevention.
So after a review of the five applicants that we had, they were all voted unanimously to make recommendation to you all to have these micro grants, present them to you for your decision on that, the total ninety-six thousand eight hundred dollars, and speaking with Ms. Sparks, our Finance Director, and she can speak to the exact amount, but there's.
Martha Sparks, yes, well, more than that, Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County, yes.
Uh, Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County, um, yes. Uh, currently, the opioid restitution fund has $615,000. We receive those revenues through two avenues. One is from the direct, um, disbursements from the National Opioid Settlement Fund and the other is from the state of Maryland through targeted abatement grants, and we've received $405,000, uh, through those grants.
Okay.
You know, the unique thing about these micro grants is a lot of these organizations don't have the capability of, uh, applying for the larger grants that come through the state, so there's some, I think they're pretty cool stuff that they're doing in our community to fill the gaps that, um, you know, are necessary things that they, they've already been doing. These aren't like startups just to say, hey, I want some money. It's, they've been doing it for years on a shoestring budget, so this will go a long way to help support them.
That's good. Okay. Any, any questions, council?
No questions. Happy, happy to support these, um, entities and their grant requests.
Sheriff, of course, I've been, I've been there representing Cal, County Council in Eldac. I was, uh, traveling and absent from the meeting, uh, where, uh, where this, but I, I certainly was familiar with all the steps leading up to this, uh, the, the decisions to create this micro grant program, to, uh, how it was designated, uh, what, what, what it is for, and, and certainly all of the, the recommendations before us are, are in accordance with, with, uh, what had led up to, to this point, the, and certainly my expectations for this. Given the funding available, have we discussed, uh, the, uh, what the, the, the frequency of cycles for this grant fund will be? Will it be simply annual? Will it be more frequent?
Well, our thought was at Eldac is that we get through this for a year, um, and, and had just this be the first year grant. I'm sure that as more money's come in, even since we started this process, as you well know, because you were so thankful for your input on the, uh, at the Eldac meetings, but I think it was 200 and some thousand when we first started debating.
Right. That was the figure that I'd remembered.
And as more, more and more money comes in, so I think that, um, we can look at this for a year and then, um, you know, have another application process, get some feedback from these folks that if they do reapply, and then other entities in the county. Um, so I think, I, my, our recommendation is to take a look at it yearly.
Great.
And go from there.
I, I would like to add that, um, also, this opioid funding is helping to continue a program that's been, that orig, was originally funded by the state of Maryland at the detention center to help with inmates, so a portion of this funding is being used to maintain that because those grants went away.
And, and that was somewhere between 100 and 200,000?
So approximately is a little over 200,000, but it was a, it was more than a 12-month grant.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, uh, Sheriff, uh, thank, thank you for your leadership on this and, and, uh, and recognizing that, uh, we need, as you have all along, that we need a multi-pronged approach to, uh, to the opioid, uh, problem in, in the community and that this provides, will provide essential support for that, that array of organizations that are providing exactly that support.
Thank you. And thank all the council because all of you have been instrumental in helping this, um, problem that we all suffer in our community and every community across America, and you've been, all of you have been tremendously supportive of, of, um, of the needs of the community, so thank you.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move to, uh, approve the, uh, micro grant applications as, uh, as recommended by the Eldac.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye? Aye. Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Good job, guys.
Thank you very much, council.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Next on the agenda is Clay Stuff.
Thank you, council. Appreciate it. Uh, under County Manager Report tonight, I have a number of items for you this evening. The first is board and committee appointments. Council, I would like to ask your consideration for the appointment of Meredith Waters to serve as an alternate on the, uh, Board of Appeals.
I'll move the appointment of Meredith Waters.
I second that.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye? Aye.
Next, council, as, uh, Commission on Aging, requesting the reappointment of Ellen Taggart, Amy Kelly, Megan Pender, and Lee Newcomb, uh, to the Commission on Aging. Uh, they're, uh, they're looking to be reappointed. They've done a good job. They're serving well and they, again, would like to continue their service.
Motion to approve the reappointment.
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye? Aye.
And finally, council, under Board and Committee Appointments, requesting your consideration to appoint Mr. Keith, reappoint Mr. Keith Watts to the Short Term Rental Review Board.
Motion to approve the reappointment.
I'll second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Abstain.
Ms. Haye? Aye.
Thank you, council. Uh, next item, I'll call Brennan Tarleton and Lisa DeFlo up. And of course, you have Martha here as well. Uh, they're here this evening to, uh, uh, request your consideration for appropriation of funds to Maryland Agricultural Cultural Land Preservation Foundation, um, referred to as the MOUTH Program.
Good evening, council. For the record, Brennan Tarleton, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me tonight is Elisa DeFlo, our Planner 3 with Department of Planning and Zoning. I'll turn it over to you to give a little bit of background.
So, um, we, uh, every year, we participate in the match funds program. Traditionally, we have given, um, a certain amount of money every year to, uh, be used to buy easements. This year, we are requesting, um, a little extra for the, for the match funds.
So, council, just for, um, for your information, the, the county's been participating in the MOUTH Program for quite some time now. We have 91 farms currently existing in easements with roughly, um, almost 14,000 acres that have been preserved through the MOUTH Program. That program that we participate in as a certified county, uh, takes funds that we use for, or collect from agricultural transfer taxes, uh, which is a 5% fee levied against a property, um, of over 20 acres in size that's converted from agricultural use to another use. Uh, the county collects that amount of money that is then, uh, remitted back to the state, but as a participating member in the MOUTH Program, uh, the county gets to keep 80% of those funds collected, uh, for the purpose and utilization within the MOUTH Program. Uh, the other 20% obviously gets remitted back to the state for their general funds. Uh, the caveat to that program is that within the five-year period in which we collect the funds, we have to then expend the funds through the program, so that means either proffering them to acquire easements or to utilize them for staffing efforts or equipment that is necessary to administer that program. Um, in past years, there's been, uh, some fluctuation in the funds that were, um, submitted back to the state to be used in the match funds program. Um, I think in the past three years, if records serve me correct in my brain, I believe we've only, uh, submitted the, the baseline of $100,000, which is what the minimum is to participate in the match fund program. Um, here, we're, we're requesting that council approve, um, the, the funds to be utilized in the amount of $990,586.51. That is the total amount that the county has collected currently, um, for the agricultural transfer tax from, I believe, 2021 to present. Martha can clarify that if I'm incorrect. Um, and the basis for that is that we've seen, uh, several substantial budget cuts to the state funding, uh, for preservation, predominantly ag preservation. Um, and you can see in the attachment that we provided with the memo, um, from Ms. Cable up at, uh, the MOUTH Program, it's almost a 73% reduction from this, from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26 that the state will be putting into this program or has allocated to this program. So understanding that there may not be a bounce back, so to speak, in the '27, '28 funding cycles, uh, we're, we're proposing to leverage these funds now to be, uh, very expeditious in trying to secure multiple easements in one funding cycle, uh, rather than what we've done in the past, contributing the $100,000 and potentially gaining one farm in preservation. By doing the full 990 and change, um, that would allow Talbot County to presume multiple easements throughout the county in the MOUTH Program and also allow us to leverage those match funds that the state matches through the MOUTH Program, uh, to match our 990 some odd thousand dollars that we would be offering up as part of this. Um, so I just wanted to be clear that, that fund amount that we're proposing to be utilized for the program isn't just part of our general fund balance and it can't be used for any other sources or resources that the county could acquire. Uh, so putting it back into this program is a big net benefit and a big win for the county as far as ag land preservation goes, and we'd want to strategically implement this now, knowing that there may not be that money available for the match fund program down the road in future years where we may have to skimp a little bit, uh, based on what the state is willing to match. And with that uncertainty, we believe this is probably the best opportunity and the best time to put these funds forward.
Very well explained, Brennan. Good job. And just for the record, council, the, uh, the request is for, uh, to allocate $990,586,051 in agricultural transfer funds to, uh, for the FY '25 MOUTH funding cycle.
Okay. Motion?
Well, uh, just, uh, thank you, I, Mr. Tarleton. I couldn't agree more about the, uh, the value and the urgency of doing this now, and I know that not only will this permanently preserve more agricultural land in Talbot County, but I know that we have, uh, a priority system for the farms, for selecting the farms which will receive this. I know that there's demand, uh, for these, uh, these easement funds from our agricultural community. This will go some distance to, uh, to meeting that, uh, some of that demand, but also because of the criteria, we will see our most valuable soils, uh, preserved, uh, farms that are adjacent to already preserved lands, that we preserve larger blocks of land and, and other priorities that are outlined within, uh, within this. Farms where best management practices are, are put into place, uh, and, uh, to, to encourage, uh, those better farming practices and, and ensure that agriculture remains the dominant land use in Talbot County as it historically has been. Thank you.
Absolutely. And, and yes, I did, I did fail to mention the interest in the program. We, we typically receive anywhere between 40 and 50 applications a year. A lot of them are reapplications because you're required to reapply on an annual cycle, uh, but we've seen a large amount of interest in this in our farming community. Uh, there's a lot of farmers that are already participating in this program on other adjacent farms that are looking to secure their other additional farms into this program, so, uh, we, we've seen some great benefits from it and, and it's definitely something that we've been able to put into practice here in this county that we'd like to continue.
So even with this increase of funds, there still will be unmet demand for, for these easement purchases?
Yes, I believe so. I don't, I don't believe there'll be any shortage of applications anytime in the near future, however, the uncertainties in funding is really why we've come before you to, to request that we be a little bit more aggressive in our spending of these taxes that we're collecting.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I thank you for being more aggressive, um, because I think, you know, putting more of the farms in preservation, because this has been a longstanding program, um, through the state of Maryland, and certainly you guys see the cuts coming, and to proactively, um, use this funding for preserving our, um, agricultural land is extremely important and valuable, um, to us. I know other counties definitely are aggressive every year, and, um, I think this is, this is great, so music to my ears and I appreciate you bringing this forth.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I'll, I'll move to, uh, approve the, um, the allocation, the request, uh, for the matching funds.
Second.
Yep.
Okay. We've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye? Aye.
Thank you, council. Why we have Bren, Brennan here. Uh, there's another item. Uh, there's a request to transfer Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, housing bond allocation. Revert that back to them, uh, for use. And Brennan, I think you're going to speak about that now. Right?
Yeah, so I think typically it's been, uh, common practice that where we've received this funding, it has been remitted back to the state to manage these, these grants in the past. In past years, obviously, that was a no-brainer for us, given the fact that we had vacancy in our housing coordinator position in the Department of Planning and Zoning. Uh, but even prior to that, when we did have an active position as a housing coordinator, um, the, the county did move forward with remitting those funds back for management at the state level, uh, just given the fact that I believe we just didn't have the capacity to manage that grant funding adequately. Um, so we're obviously here recommending that that be the case now, uh, with hopes...
The amount of $1,748,747 to the Department for Use and Issuing Housing Bonds or Mortgage Credit Certificates on behalf of Talbot County. Last year, DHCD assisted five loans.
And so, just one question. Um, do we get a report on the activity in Talbot County from DHCD?
I believe they do submit us a report that says exactly how these funds have been expended. I don't have the one from this past year on hand, though.
Okay. So, could we start having that as this request goes forward from DHCD so that we know, um, how much and where it's being, um, allocated, just so that we, um, can keep an eye on it?
Absolutely.
Since we're transferring that to, um, DHCD.
Absolutely.
Other than that, I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye? Aye.
Okay. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. And council, I have, uh, several more requests here on behalf of our Roads Department. Uh, they are requesting, um, use of capital outlay funding to purchase a new ECO trailer jet pipe jetter. Um, the department is requesting council approval to purchase this pipe jetter from Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems in the amount of $86,873, which is a source well price. That's a group purchasing, uh, group which meets our procurement requirements. The Roads Department has funds in the FY '25 budget, which was approved by council.
Motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye? Aye.
The next Road Department, uh, is requesting council approval to purchase a road widener from Carter Cat in the amount of $72,000, which is a source well price as well. Road Department has the funds in their FY '25 budget. Uh, this, this device, um, is known as a right-hand shouldering machine and aids in road wire, uh, widening. It attaches to a skid steer when they widen the road, um, and it's a piece of equipment they, uh, had budgeted and it got approved in the budget.
Motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And finally, from the Roads Department, they're requesting FY25 capital outlay funding to purchase a well or track paver. As you read in your agenda pack, the Roads Department's requesting counsel approval to purchase a track paver from Carter Cat in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is a source well price as well. Roads Department has the funds in the FY25 budget, which was approved by counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And counsel, I asked Ray Clark, your county engineer, to come forward with an item. He's going to be asking your consideration for approval to award sludge removal services from a vendor for the waste, Martingham wastewater lagoons, and he'll give you a little more detail on that.
Counsel, again, Ray Clark, county engineer, this is associated with removing the sludge that's within the lagoons at Martingham. Ultimately, the county took over the facility back in two thousand and eight. The property is owned by the Martingham Utilities Cooperative Board, and ultimately, we have an easement to operate a wastewater treatment plant. This is to remove that sludge so that we can then turn that property back over to the Martingham Utilities Cooperative Board. We also had one of the members of the board who had a contractor they wanted us to try and seek a proposal from. That was a Rundle excavation, and then we also worked to get a proposal from Good Life as well and Bridges Land Management. One of the difficulties with this project is Maryland environmental services kind of limiting us to only taking one load per day of the sludge to the landfill. So, it's, it's kind of a labor-intensive process to get this done. So, again, Good Life was actually the lowest proposal that we received, seventy thousand, five hundred dollars, and that's the recommendation is go ahead and award that to Good Life for seventy thousand, five hundred dollars, and we'd be utilizing the funds within the budget.
Okay. So, Mr. Clark, the destination for this is the landfill, not the biosalts facility?
No, sir. It'd be the landfill. Yes, yes. You're correct.
Okay.
And this is exciting because on Ray Clark's list of about fifty projects, this is one that will be knocked off.
Actually checked off. Well, that, that's, that's something to celebrate, and I, I know that this has been a, a long process in really improving wastewater treatment for Martingham, which previously had its own, own system, and this, this bodes, already has improved the health of the Miles River. So, thank you for all of your efforts over the years in getting us to this point. I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Okay. We've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. While Ray's up here, we have a request from the Department of Public Works to award change order number two for bid number twenty-four dash fourteen, EMS North Station in Cordova, design-build proposal and to enter a no-cost agreement with the Maryland Transit Administration for the north EMS station entrance. Ray will fill in some detail on that as well.
Again, counsel, we've been working very closely with the Maryland Transit, Transit Authority in securing a lease agreement. Originally, that lease agreement, they wanted, I think it was about two thousand or twenty-four hundred dollars per year for us to execute this lease agreement. We've worked out a deal with MTA not to pay that twenty-four hundred dollars per year. So, this is ultimately providing us with the ability to cross that railroad easement with our entrance to the EMS North Station. It's roughly about a sixty-foot wide easement. That being said, we did not include this as part of the design-build package because we didn't know all the details that's associated with this easement. So, we ended up having to do a change order with IEC, and this is what this is all about, is doing a change order with IEC to go ahead and build that new entrance off of Maryland Route three oh nine.
And the change order, Ray, I believe-
The change order amount is actually for two hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars, and that would actually be billed to CPCEO, BLDG, I think it's eighty, eighty-four oh two dash oh one, which is the EMS North Station.
Okay. Okay. I'll, I'll move to approve the change order and the, and the no-cost agreement with MTA.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. And then while Ray's here, he has one more to ask. Your request from Department of Public Works to have the Talbot County Sanitary District provide loans to individuals to assist with costs for connection to public sewer as outlined in Resolution, Resolution Number Two Thirty-five.
Thank you. Counsel, this is a program we've actually have received, citizens asking us if we, they could finance part of the sewer connection. So, the, in reviewing this with County Manager's Office and Finance Office, the, the focus is really to go ahead and provide the property owners with the opportunity to finance the, the capital charge or the connection charge at twelve thousand dollars. So, this would be a loan that would be up to twelve thousand dollars, no more, and then it would be a five-year loan at a percentage of one percent. Currently, to date, we, we started this pretty much last week with Schumer Incorporated initiating the installation of what we call the septic tank effluent pump systems. We have already executed twenty-three public works agreements and received the funds to connect those properties. So, of that twelve thousand dollars, we're probably now have acquired about two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. We have fifteen properties at this point in time that have requested the financing strategy or this financing, and we currently have a request of eighty-five properties at this point seeking an estimate to connect a sewer service. So, we are actively moving to try and get, make this happen. I think with this loan program, it'll help us to provide more, or helping us getting more property owners to connect, I think.
Okay. Sounds great. Is there a motion?
Uh, this, this is a, this is a really valuable step forward in getting these, these properties connected and, and making this, making this a little bit easier for the residents, ultimately the rate payers to these sewer systems to, to be able to tackle the capital charges that they need, the upfront charges, and, and finance that over a period of time. And I, I think this is a valuable service for the, for the county to be providing. I will, I'll move to approve it.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. Ray, good job.
A little bit of harmonizing there going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Ray.
Yeah.
Thank you, counsel. And then finally, under County Manager Report, I just want to announce Friday is going to be a exciting day here in Talbot County. It's going to be Talbot Day. Festivities will begin at five PM here in front of the courthouse. Counsel will be announcing some citizen awards, poster contest awards. There'll be refreshments, and it'll be a fun time. So, just an announcement for folks to come out and celebrate Talbot Day. With that, that completes your County Manager Report for this evening. Thank you, counsel, for your continued support.
Yep, yep. Good, good job, Clay. Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment. Yep.
I have to sign off on the sheet.
There ain't no problem. No problem. Hey, Jess?
My name is Phil Rigan.
Check that sheet.
Two-nine-seven-three-six, Sullivan Drive.
Aye.
You've got it memorized.
That's great.
Um, I want to talk just about a couple of things quickly. You obviously have finished your proposed budget for the next fiscal year, and it's out in the, in the media, at least in terms of those who have contact with the county government. Uh, I understand you have two budget hearings set up for May sixth. One of them is here in this room, and one of them is Easton High School, as I understand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I, I mentioned to you back in September when I attended the first county council meeting in my lifetime at least, and I said I would, we were happy, I was happy to pay taxes here in this county, and you, Mr. Callahan, said you were more than happy to accept those taxes. And, and that's, that's, that's a fair deal. Now, with the budget sitting in front of us and with other issues flying around, some of which are beyond your control at different levels of government, we get a chance to see how well those taxes are being, are being allocated and, and spent. One of the things I would ask you to, to keep in mind over the long term, Talbot County has a local income tax rate of two-point-four percent of Maryland taxable income, and as such, it is the second most favorable tax rate in the state, exceeded only by, in terms of favorability, by Worcester County. And as I remember, I think even three or four years ago, Talbot was the lowest. I don't know what happened in the meantime, but that's history. I do think, and, and that tax rate is about thirty percent less than most counties in the state of Maryland and certainly on the eastern shore, with the exception of Worcester County. So, it's an interesting separation in terms of, of what you pay in local income tax. And I would be, I'd be willing about that, a lot of Marylanders who have people paying their tax, for their tax returns, don't even know that there's a local income tax in Maryland. But, believe me, it's real, as you well know. I do think that it's an, it's a, another reason why people consider moving here. I'm not saying it's the primary reason. I think it's a supporting reason. Obviously, in my community, um, there are at least seven hundred residents who'd made a decision at some point in the last fifteen years to move to Easton. There are very few native Easton or Talbot County people living in my community. However, that's not a reflection of the entire county. I realize you've got twenty thousand people outside of Easton who live in Talbot County, and they're, most of them have lived here for a long time, probably. But, there are people who decide to move here and there are reasons for that. So, I want you to, I want you to know that I think they may be one of them. Um, I don't know whether the, yeah, the Finance Director is still here. I, you, you people, I, I'm assuming that the Comptroller of Maryland gives you a complete and accurate number on, on, on all the taxable income in the county, so that you can compute your own two-point-four percent, making sure you get all the money you're, you're supposed to get. But, you know, that's for somebody else to decide. In any case, um, so, that two-point, that two-point-four percent of Maryland taxable income is a big deal, as far as I'm concerned, I think, in the, in the minds of a lot of other people. I also received notice today, just before I got over here, that there's some kind of series of economic development conversations around the county that's being scheduled, and I think that's extremely important. It would be interesting to get some input from various people in various parts of the county as to, as to what we can collectively do to, to promote economic development. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to finding the closest one to me, which I think is probably the, at the library. So, I'm going to make sure I go there. Anyhow, just wanted to say those various things, and, and I, again, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you folks.
Okay. We appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rigan.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else want to come on up? You've been very quiet back there, you know?
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. I got you. I got you. All right. Um, all right. Next is counsel, counsel comments. Mr. Lusher?
Give me a moment. My, my screen is freezing up here.
All right. Ms. Milkie?
I just want to encourage everybody to come to Talbot Day. It's going to be a great day, and we're so proud of this county, and we need to, to reflect that.
Yep, we do. Yep.
I second what Ms. Milkie has said.
Yep, I do, too. Are we ready?
Here it is. I, I've, I'm going to take them a moment to recognize County Communications Manager Sarah Kilman for initiating the first meeting of the Talbot Two-Fifty Commission for the commemoration of America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth in 2026, and her observation that we need to add to it, an observation of Talbot County's three-hundred-and-sixty-fifth, which coincides with, with America's two-fiftieth. We already have, at Ms. Kilman's initiation, a website and collateral materials. Stay posted. There are wonderful stories to tell about Talbot and Talbot's place in America that we can commemorate in America's two-fiftieth, Talbot's three-hundred-and-sixty-fifth.
Nice.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? All right. Other than that, so, it's a big night for me. That's why I've been rushing. So, we got a little baby coming tonight. We got a little, 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 little baby coming, little girl coming, so.
Are you, are you going to get a new title, Mr. Callahan?
I, I might. I might. It's going to be Papa. It's going to be Papa. Yep. So, she's getting induced tonight in Baltimore around like nine o'clock tonight, so.
Well, congratulations.
Yep, yep. Thank you. Thank you. So, other than that, let's, let's-
Well, that's a happy note to end on.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I'll try to do that on a happy note, you know?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May sixth, beginning at one-thirty PM. The council will be convening an open session at twelve-thirty PM and then adjourning into closed session, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, it's their motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene is noted.
So moved.
Okay. We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay. Well, thanks, everybody, for coming. Appreciate it and be here Friday night to Talbot night.